Thursday, October 11th, 2018, I would like to call the Albertan City Council Meeting to Order. We will start with the Fledge of Allegiance. My pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thank you for that. Our clerk, please, McRochol.
Counselor Menson.
I'm here.
Counselor Shont.
Present.
Counselor Sarson.
Here.
Counselor Chong.
Yes.
Counselor Henderson.
Here.
Thank you. Please note Mayor McClintock is absent. Alright, so first order is approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Shont.
Second.
Second by Menson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our sheriff is not here yet, once he comes in we'll make sure that he moves to the front of the line. So we're on to the mayor pro tems report. I did want to let the rest of the council know that since we last met, Public Works, city clerk, councilman Shont and I met with folks from the East Central Iowa Council of Governments as well as Lynn County Emergency Management for a hazard mitigation planning meeting, and that was, I thought it was a very productive meeting, so we walked through what's been identified as possible hazards, things like tornadoes, floods, what's not, you know, we're not worried about hurricanes, those types of things, and then any mitigations or controls we have in place. One action item we walked out with was surprisingly debris management, from like a tornado standpoint, having a plan in place should something hit. Ironically, that was the same day that the tornado hit Outbike Foundation, so lesson learned, so let's do those in a ten year. Yeah, we expect that report this spring, so it has to go through various approvals, through the state, things like that, but it was a really good meeting. And that's all I have. So we'll move on to, any questions? Move on to council reports. Council votes in.
Nothing from me this month.
I would like to mention that I was part of the committee that went through the lockbox at the bank of our things, and there's some things that are missing that I'm asking for everybody's help here, if you know where they are, like the abstract for the fire station, abstract for the maintenance shed up there, the lease for the wet well south of town, and also the abstract for the lagoons, and we have no idea where they are and if anybody has heard or knows or whatever. Why?
They may be in here somewhere.
Yeah.
But they weren't.
They just put it in the lockbox and I just want somebody to know where they are, why? Please let us know. Thank you.
I have more.
Councilman?
I just want to say that, you know, we know we have a great response with our fire department, and we have, and I've seen calls, whatever, but last few times we've had some pretty severe weather, and I've noticed as well that they're just really prompt about getting out there and, you know, obviously putting themselves at risk to make sure they're spotted when those things are happening, and been very close to my house the last couple of times, but just in general, and they're moving around, appreciate their prompt service and put themselves at risk to do that, so.
Thank you. And Chief Graham, I do want to say you got kudos from emergency management as well. They made note of you guys' response and your activity on the radio as we've had the incidents close to home here.
Well, like two times they never paged us out, we were on our own.
Really?
Well, they're listening, so.
Oh, yeah.
Keep it up. Alright, so we are at the portion of the agenda where we're going to take citizen comments. The first one is for anything that is agenda related. If you're on the agenda, then you don't need to speak at this time, we'll get to your item, but if you have any concerns about other agenda items, now is your time. Alright, hearing none, we'll move to non-agenda items. Alright, close citizen comments. Alright, we have our written reports from Public Works, city clerk and fire department, so we will start with Public Works.
Notes today, I had three things come up basically today or since I wrote my report. One is just an idea brought up by the foundation to try and do some kind of joint action with Alliance Club and the city for various reasons you understand about the sign that is down by the fire station. The foundation is wondering if it's maybe timed upgraded to an electronic sign, so we can scroll some more information, contain more information. The reason that includes us is obviously we're at this point providing the power for the light, and electronic side would take a little more power, but, and it's on our property, obviously, but the sign was Alliance Club, the sign that's there was Alliance Club project, and so the foundation would like to keep them involved as well. Just putting it on your radar, more information to come that that's being talked about, so. I don't have any more details than that, they don't know the cost, they don't know any of that stuff, but obviously the infrastructure is there, so they're wanting to look into it, so just information only. Many of you will probably remember the dual water meter in the same basement situation. It's probably going to be fixed as early as Monday. One house is for sale, and it's, an inspector caught it this time, the last time the house was sold, the inspector didn't notice, so we will have separation hopefully as early as Monday. So that'll be taken care of. And also, we met with Brad Klein and Mike Whitaker from Ferguson Waterworks, who Ferguson supplies our water meters, they are the next few reps, and probably for next month I'll have a quote on some new meters. We are down to three of the new digital electronic readers that we purchased to help with the addition. We are running out of parts for the older style meters we've just used, we've gone through them, you can still get them, but it's fairly ridiculous to continue to just add parts to those meters because they're getting to be 10 years old. They have an expected 20-year lifespan, realistically that's probably more like 15, 10-year full warranty prorated for 10, and so after a long discussion about the pros and cons, I think it's probably in our best interest, we have, we have three new, or two new, full electronic meters where the radio and the, and the register are integrated, we have three just the meter bodies themselves that are brand new, and we can buy new radio reads to put on top of those, and so rather than piece apart out these older ones that have a separate register, a separate radio, and then the meter body, I would replace the entire unit. They're roughly $225 apiece, and we can tell how old they are. There could be trade-in value, they may give us trade-in value for the old ones we take off, and also in the long run, we're going to wind up saving because those meters, the meter body themselves, lose point three percent accuracy every year, so in 10 years they're reading three percent less at least than when they were new, so this seems like a low-cost way to start upgrading the fleet, so to speak. Soon as one malfunctions in any form, just put in an entire new unit. So, the ones, the bases that we have that have no register or radio read on them, that's about 120 to put a new radio read and register on them. And then, when we get converted to these all-new electronic ones, we already have several of them out, we can data log, so if you have somebody come in with a complaint about, you know, I didn't use that much water, you can actually, it'll sample 96 times a day, we can come, take that data off the meter and show them in a graph form, you know, every night at midnight you were going through 200 gallons of water, that's why your bill was so high, so something's kicking on and running that shouldn't be or whatever, so it's a, it's a good protection for us too to combat angry people about high water bills, so. I'll have something put together for you next month, though, we won't need anything before then, or shouldn't be. That just all came up. Any, otherwise, any questions about the report?
Does anyone question, I'm not telling dagger at you.
Yeah.
You know, we talked about an ice skating rink.
Mm-hmm.
Now is that progressing at all, or?
We just have continued.
Or we're just dead in the water till next year?
It, it's just simply because of the weather and not being able to get that dirt work done and then throwing this land purchase into it, and I just can't see the point in buying a $7,000 skating rink and putting it in the shed for the winter, you know?
I understand, but I just.
Yeah.
Thought I'd bring that up.
Yeah, the other thing that is not on, didn't get in my report, Danielle and I went and had our collective again at the school, we did it last year, seeing if there's anything they could help us with, and we, we asked them for their input, especially to poll the elementary students, because they're the ones that are probably going to use it, what would they like to see out there at that park, by that fire station, et cetera, even a little bit of, is there any activities and uses could be what they would expect to use out of the meeting room, if we get a meeting room portion of the fire station or even out of the bay area for an event in warm enough weather, and I don't know how much of this they'll bite on and, and take a hold of, but that ice skating rink gesture got brought up at the same time, I said that's our, this is our original plan, tell us how many of you would use that, you know, give us an idea, is it really a good investment, you know, and make sure we've made direct choice there. So hopefully they'll take some time to do some survey and get us, get us some information and feedback on that, so.
Target population, I like that.
Yeah, yeah, well, yeah, I mean, I said, it looks to me like you got, most of the users are right down here in this building, right over here, so, you know, you got them captive, find out, so. The middle schoolers and the upper elementary should be able to tell you what they like to see in a park. And one of the high schoolers come up afterwards, wanted to know if maybe a limited scale skatepark would be available. He likes to skateboard and he winds up driving, or having someone drive him to see the Rappids of Marion to, to skate, and so I said, I said, anything's possible, really, you know, just, we need some ideas, so. Anyway, we'll see how much they come up with, it's, it's a high school situation, we'll, we'll see, hopefully they can bring us some good things, but that's out there. And they can as well, too.
Anything else for guys? City clerk.
I don't really have anything to add, I just, going to some trainings and really found them to be beneficial, and looking forward to doing more of that, I'm ready to I M F O A conference next week, so I'll be out of the office for a couple of days in the morning, so, guys, going to hold down the fort here.
How did it go with data tech onsite? Was that beneficial?
It was, yeah.
Oh, we do have on here, so Danielle and I met regarding the computer for the fire department, so we looked at options, we were also going to talk to Steve or maybe TJ and just make sure we're getting something that has enough power but isn't excessive where it drives up the cost, so we're really trying to figure out what they need. We found one with significant memory on it, I think we'd do a great job for about 450, but at this point, I think we might wait and see what we can get at Black Friday, you know, get twice the computer for the same price type of deal, so we're right in the corner from that. If there are any questions on that, I'm happy to help field those.
Is that included whole software they need, or is that software to purchase above that?
That would come with Windows.
Do they put off the suite on there anymore? Or not?
No.
Subscription though?
Oh, that's right, it's off.
So, the subscription though, and then you evaluate there's.
Yeah, and Mr. Givens would help us with those types of things.
Mike, not give me a quote on computers?
Well, he sent us to Best Buy and Amazon, we started with him.
Okay, well, I talked to him Sunday, and he said he's going to send some quotes over for some good computers.
Okay, we'll keep an eye out for that, too. We just want to make sure you get, we don't want to undercut it, but at the same time, no sense in having a power machines.
Yeah, he was rambling something off, and this would be perfect for you, I'm like, oh.
Yeah, perfect, well, he can get ahold of Danielle.
That's what he does.
Yeah.
Alright, any questions for Danielle? Alright, on to our fire department, Chief Grant.
Yeah, nothing really new, we, we talked about grants and stuff, and we had our golf tournament, I think something about $4,800 we raised, so.
Good.
It's all good, but, had quite a few teams out there, so, make sure we'll do it sooner in the year.
I don't think it mattered this year, but.
Oh, yeah, it would be a warm one.
I like the ingenuity, trying something different, so, that's, that's good.
That's probably our best fundraiser we've ever had, so.
Can we talk about the Christmas tree thing?
Yes.
You brought it up in your report, so that was off my radar because Sharon usually went out and beat the bushes and found a, a tree, what's your opinion? Keep the tradition up, like Steve asked in his report? If so, we got to locate a tree, and that sometimes takes time. We haven't had to pay for one in a long time, but honestly, I don't know how she went about finding some of the ones.
Very true.
I want to say Doug Keel offered.
And we took that one last year, that was last year's tree.
Not much of that one or not?
I don't know, and we've gotten them from Kenny Andrews, or Kenny Andrews, but that's touchy because they're trying to sell everyone that they can, and so it's going to be a pretty ugly one that they don't think they're going to sell, but that's alright for this situation.
It's also a big one, too, that don't be easy buys anyway.
Yeah, how big is that usually, 15 feet?
Yeah, and I don't want to go as big as that one we had last year, that was a pain in the butt.
Just come to the rinky-dink like that one here.
Oh, yeah, I know, I'll talk with Kenny and go down that route, if you want to continue down that route, that's fine, I just need to know that I need to beat the bushes for it, and it's, by all means, if you hear somebody to.
Yeah, I just wanted to talk to the school about getting the elementary kids again to sing and.
Emily Leclerc. So E Leclerc.
Alright.
At Albertan CSD.
Alright.
Two thousand and two hundred.
Was there anyone opposed to the Christmas tree? Go ahead and get started on that.
It's normal, I just wanted to make sure.
Girls here.
Yeah.
Can't put the rickets. Say that.
Alright, any questions for Steve? Fire trucks, all the equipment, good to go?
Just some minor stuff, you know, about nothing, nothing major.
I want to thank you, Steve, for turning in the gas receipts, those are very important for two things. One is that we're going to start filing for gas refund on the taxes, and that's 50 cents a gallon, so that's going to add up to some money. Also, the other thing is that when we have our audit, we have to show evidence that we actually purchased something with the money that we spent, so neither we can use those receipts.
Yeah, I forgot they're in the drawer until she said something, and I didn't know if they're all there, but they're probably there, so.
Yeah, and one other thing I'd like to just mention to you is that when we've got that audit coming up at the end of the month for the workman's comp, and that requires, you know, just a list of your people and what's so on, they, ours physicals and stuff.
I took that afternoon off, so I'll be there.
Okay, I don't think you necessarily have to be up to snuff, but just say what, what you got, what you plan on doing, that's all.
Yep.
Thank you.
It'd probably have been nice for me to be in hazard mitigation class, too, you guys did, I mean, we're your first one out for learn to respond, then kind of asking all your hazards in town.
Well, a lot of it was equipment type failures and stuff, infrastructure, that type of thing, so.
Where's all your first ones at?
I've got the report if you want to look over it, we really didn't change.
That's not that, that's not that part of it, it's handling the afterwards.
We still handle the afterwards, too.
I can show you the report, we didn't change much, we added the debris management, and actually we're waiting on the county because they're, they said they're developing something first, so we'll wait for EMA, but yeah, I can share that report with you.
I have a question for Steve. In your report, you're, you're asking about the TV at the fire station, are you looking for cable TV or just good old TV9 antenna TV?
We used to have cable, I, since they put the new in, we don't have it. I don't know if it's still something they offer free, if not, antenna would be great, just.
Ben, I asked Ben, Ben said I have, probably Mitch would hook it back up, so I emailed Mitch, no response, so, I mean, I'll have to email him again, it, it probably just, I don't know, I just don't know if he'll do it.
Surprisingly enough, like we're doing storm watch, we'll learn more stuff off the news before EMA would give it to us, so it's just whoever's manning the base, they can be watching it and letting people know it's up the truck. It's just funny how the news knows before we do.
I'm wondering with the new computer, if you couldn't just stream KCRG onto your big screen, I mean, if, if, yeah, don't get me wrong, if Farmers Mutual will give us cable TV, so be it, fine, no problem, but if, if they won't before we put an antenna up or do something like that, maybe we'll see if, with the new computer, we could just stream it, because you got good internet, we know we got good internet over there now, so maybe that would be the way to go.
And we don't need the whole.
It's just to get the weather.
This one, channel 279, I mean.
Definitely worth a follow-up. Something that was included before, we can let them run utilities through our cities, so.
Exactly.
That's why I think ignore my, ignore my email, just going to wait until, see if I slap them again before they answer, so.
Alright, anything else for Steve? Perfect, thank you for all you do, sir. Alright, item number 10, approval of the consent agenda. Keep a motion on that?
Do you want to add some?
Oh, do you really think that?
No, I think the ones I added are in there.
Okay. I decided you had one that was so moved.
Moved by Shont.
Second.
Second by Henderson, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alright, we're on to new business. Item number one, the AC/DC playground equipment, water sewer connections, and a possible motion.
Mr. Trimble's telling me about the old playground equipment from a school that's been sitting around collecting rust and, and we were wondering if, if the city is not going to use it, we would like to re-erect it back down at the diamond, that was the first thing.
And is that in a condition where it can be reassembled?
Yeah, I mean, there'd be some parts. If, if you were going to completely reassemble it as it was, you'd have to buy a few pieces or, or repair, there was a little damage when it came out, but I think you can probably still get those plans, you'd have to contact the company. You could even probably use portions of it, not necessarily put it back in its complete entirety, but yes, it, when we took it, it was in exchange for using the city's skid loader to help remove it, thinking we may erect it somewhere, I feel like the direction we're going now is we probably buy a new set or, or smaller pieces located over a larger piece of ground and re-erect that set, that's my feeling, so we have nothing in it. If it's going to be erected here in town, I say go for it, that's my.
This came, this is the one that came from the school that we had talked about, said mine, yeah.
Yes. I'll throw my opinion, as far as the green space that we have, it makes me rather nervous to have a playground that close to a street, so I don't see it, anything the city would use. That's just my opinion.
My opinion is nobody, no kids are playing on it, they might as well get some good out of it, if you can use it.
We would love it, because, I mean, when we have our games going, we see the kids that aren't playing, just.
I think if you can use it, do it.
Running crazy. And just that, you know, when kids are down there, instead of tearing up a field, they may be playing on the, on the playground instead.
Any other comments on that? We don't have any investment in it, do we need a motion on that?
I feel like we do.
Okay. So, it's all yours?
So, I can work with that, okay.
Yeah, work with Guy on that.
And the other thing was, I think most of you know we got a grant to put permanent bathrooms in down at the, the Ball Diamond, however, after working with Jeremy and Guy and, and we're, we have no sewer line down there, so Jeremy suggested a holding tank to be pumped, however, if there's any other suggestions.
I'm sorry.
You know, because other than ripping up the street or neighbors' yards and eating away everything we got to build bathrooms, I mean, it would take everything that was given to us to, to do that, so. So you're saying septic system or just, just the holding tank? Since it'd be used, you know, three months out of year, really June is like when we got hammered with, with the amount of games, we had almost 30 games in the month of June, so it'd be, we pump probably weekly in the month of June, and I have friends that, you know, Mahers to, to pump, and I think they donate the pumping service for that. Otherwise, you know, I hate giving money back to the county that was given to us, but we just wouldn't have the funds to, to extend the sewer down to where we need it.
So, Guy and I did have a conversation on this, my personal opinion is this is within city limits, I feel it's the city's responsibility to extend these services to our residents, so I don't feel like that. My opinion is I think we should extend the utilities to reach their connection point at our cost.
How far does it have to go?
It would be, I haven't got an exact measurement, but 50 to 60 feet from the last manhole on that street. No, you know, you'd have to, but it's fairly deep, you'd have to probably cut out 10 foot of, of street in order to either slope your trench or, or at least get a trench box in it, you know, to lay it. Probably wouldn't need any more, you correct me if I'm wrong, Joe, but a clean out on the end, because it's, it's a dead end manhole now, if you just extend it out, you know, put a clean out on the end, and while your trench is open, allow them to coordinate and allow them to get a heat to it, and then fill it back in, report it to center of your street.
That's how you would want to handle it.
Is there enough fall to make it work?
Yeah, I'm sure there is, because it, you're going to want to, your grade's going to come up, and if the existing sewer is six or seven feet deep, you're going to have plenty, it's not probably going to be any less than five foot deep when you get.
Yeah, grade.
Yeah.
Don't have to worry about basement.
Yeah, yeah, and they're talking about just, you're kind of talking about extending your, your building that's there, right?
Yeah, like, if you've been to that diamond where the, where our shed is at, the big door, we're going to come off of there towards the, towards the street.
So then, at that point, if we extended our sewer out that far, you probably only have, what, 25, 30 feet of pipe to put in, which is a game changer, then they've invested most of their money into the bathroom itself rather than, than getting connected to the sewer.
In my opinion, the only time we've made exception is we have the one resident on the edge of town, but we don't have enough fall.
No fall, they'd have to go through.
Physically make this happen.
Had to go through other people's yards if we were going to make something work.
And that's not the case here, so I'm open to other discussion on this, because there will be expense.
You know, you mentioned something about the water, is there going to put there, can we get by that water?
Yeah, that'll be the only obstacle, only true obstacle is the water main crosses, it would cross, and so as far as, you know.
Eight inches of the separation.
Yeah.
You've got to use water main quality pipe for the sewer.
Right, 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 but that would be the only hangup, and if it is only 75 feet, you know, even if we had to upgrade to the water quality pipe to make it through there, we're not adding a ton of money, it doesn't change the operation of putting a pipe in the ground, just increase.
Just an extra 10 bucks a foot, you know, it's not that much.
Yeah, so, it's overcomeable anyway, if, if we do have to go within the 18 inches, and that also helps there, the fact that the main is close by, they'll be able to tap easily to get the water to go back there as well, so.
So they'll be metered and they'll be paying a water sewer service?
Well, we'd have, it probably would be wise to meter the water, whether the city would decide that maybe they wouldn't necessarily have to be, you know, paying the fee or not, that's a decision for on down the road, but, or it could be at least seasonal, you know, if they did have to pay a water charge, it was only for the months that.
That they use.
That they use it, those.
Because we were going to put a, like, external shut-off, Jeremy, so like.
Oh, yeah, you have to, curb stop, yeah.
Somebody would probably complain if we didn't meter it.
Yeah, no, and if, nothing else, we need to know if there's a, if there's a leak, we need to get a monitor on it so we're not wasting water.
Probably for a city or ordinance, you have to meter it, you can't just provide service even for any entity.
They used to do for the churches here down, the state got after us, made a stop.
In a, in a seasonal environment like that, we could probably install the meter in the building and then just remove it for the winter, take it out of there, make sure everything's, shut off the curb, take the meter out, put it back in in the spring and back in business.
I'll say that.
I'll say that, um, the service that the ACDC provides to our community is above and beyond what a private, I mean, I guess that's a lot of private property we do, so I'm totally over that, and if you've ever spent time there, which I spend a lot of Tuesdays and Thursday nights at that place, and to not be able to use the restroom, have your kids use the restroom, I'm all for whatever we need to do to help them out, I think they provide a great public service to our community, so.
And it'll help strengthen their club, too.
Yeah, and we're just.
Well, I think at least we ought to get an engineering estimate about what it would cost, because that always helps when you've got numbers to talk.
What is your timeline for your project?
Well, this weather has completely messed everything up, because we're, we're working with Ann Lee, and he's, you know, so far back. We might not be looking till the spring to do concrete now, because of the, just because of the way the weather is shaped up, anyway, so.
And given this development and you're happy, I mean, if, if we were to pursue extending these services, you would have to wait for that, I assume, Guy, right?
Yeah, we have to wait for it.
Yeah, we have to, we'd have to go through the engineer and get all that stuff in place, we can't, we can't operate that quickly.
Yeah.
You know, even Jeremy'd probably be faster than what we are.
I didn't know if they could start their project and then
No, it's.
Just make the hookup or fit on.
Yeah.
If, if we had an engineer, if, if the engineer told us where that pipe was gonna land?
Yes.
Then they could.
So, yeah, so I have a couple ideas, one, if it's a public sewer extension, you're supposed to get a construction permit from the DNR, whereas if it's just classified as a sewer service, you wouldn't necessarily need a construction permit.
Oh.
If it's a service.
But if it's a service, exactly.
You need our street, so. It's a catch twenty.
We gotta do it right.
Yeah, we know. And is there a potential for anyone else to connect that extension ever?
The only, the only way, and we were thinking about this, there's, there's no property available except their diamond, the only way that it would, could possibly lead to anymore is if the club became defunct and the, you know, the property sold, and then, yes, somebody could develop that into, into housing, but it'd be a do-over on the street and everything at that point, too, you know, so.
I would think that we would wanna put in a pipe big enough to handle a development, whatever.
And, and we could assume, yeah.
At least put in the same size that's there.
Yeah, and that's not, I mean, even if you're talking ballpark size, even a six inch pipe, that would, you know, we can, we can assume, but it would be equivalent in size, you know, several residential lots if that ever happened, so, um, yeah.
There's the diamond.
But there's, um, as far as our involvement, we would, if our surveyors are gonna be in town working on the culvert, it would be really easy to shoot, take, take a few points, so map that little area. At the same time.
That's the end of the road, right there, into the manhole, into the sewer. Here, keep right by that vehicle, and then basically you'd have to get it down into this neighborhood.
Yeah, like, right where your mouse was, is that storm's room.
Right, and this is where they're gonna put their restroom.
Center of the street?
Well, we talked about going in the right of way, what's your opinion on that, I mean, we could kick over and not tear as much concrete out, but you're still disrupting this person's front yard for.
Yeah, for that, you, you could get away with a, a clean out at that bend instead of a manhole, you know, um, and it would soon, I, I could, I'll, I can work up, we can work up a cost.
Yeah, that's just to have no use, like, on any town, huh?
Yeah, so I can tell you it saves a lot of money to do that, and you can make that different call, yeah, than be in their yard.
Yeah, and the water main's right in here.
Yeah.
I think that's the hydrant, so.
It's the main that comes.
Goes across the end.
Across the whole lake.
Across anyway.
About where the van is.
Yeah.
Perks, I wish, goes the whole lake, third avenue all the way down the tracks.
Yeah, that, yeah, that one crosses over by Dan Sherman's shop.
So it would end pretty much in the intersection, like, here or?
Yeah, it's probably the mouse is.
Here, the, the shed is gonna.
The shed is where, this is where the restroom would be, right here.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, right.
Well, it's gonna come about forty feet.
We can get together afterwards.
You've got the, yep, not, just like, in visual, maybe, so.
Thank you, that was all.
Should we motion to start the project?
Yeah, I think if you.
We should probably get some official action.
If you move for MSA to move ahead and give us a preliminary estimate, um, I think that'd be wise, because then we always, if something doesn't turn out the way we think, we can always pull the plug if that happens.
Yeah.
But I think, yeah, you'll have to have a motion to get it happening.
I'm entertaining that.
I'd make a motion if we allow MSA to give us an estimate for the extension of the sewer line on the, I'll call it the south end of Mailer Drive.
Yeah.
Motion by Menzen?
Second.
Second by Hendrickson, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I can't thank you guys enough for bringing, bringing that up, thank you.
You're doing your things.
We're, we're trying, and, and, thank you again.
We sure appreciate it.
We, I, that was, that was the last thing I was expecting, coming in, I, this, thank you.
I told you, you're a good friend.
I, I, I.
Alright, item number two hundred, new business, trick or treating hours for Halloween, which falls on a Wednesday this year. What do we usually do, five to seven perhaps?
Right.
Yeah.
Five to seven.
Or were we earlier?
Five is way early, who's even phoned by five?
Yeah, five is unfortunate.
Seven's about to cut off, I think.
Yeah, I know.
It's late, Dan, it's late.
After seven, I hear some people shaving, put on lipstick.
Five thirty to seven? Anybody?
I can start at five.
You might as well put five to seven in our actual.
Yeah.
And if I'm not home, tough.
Do we have to have a motion on this? I couldn't remember.
No, I just have a question, and this just is, um, with the, uh, family evening, evening set aside, church evening, do we, do we do it on a Wednesday? This is not, obviously my first time in the council, but it'd been seven years ago now, do we do it on a Wednesday on those events, because there, there is the youth church evening, um, scheduled typically on Wednesdays, I don't know if they don't hold something because it's Halloween, I doubt that, but, um, that may be just something to check in with me, or, or maybe we don't care about that, I'm just checking in, we, we typically have, from the school's perspective, we do nothing after six PM on Wednesdays because of the youth groups and the, um, young people's functions of the, the local and, you know, the, the rabbit's church, so it's something to think about.
I belong to the Christian church here in town, and they're gonna have their, what they call the trunk thing on the parking lot.
There you go, perfect.
For all the kids or anybody that's interested.
That's right.
Going, they're gonna have trick or treat out there, so, I can't believe, I can't speak for the other churches, but I know the Christian church is gonna do that, and they get, last year they had a big turnout.
And that's what I mean, last year it was on a Tuesday or whatever, it was Thursday, I don't know which way it goes, but I just didn't know if they're being on there tonight, that they have their youth stuff, if that was the same, so if it is, then that's a moot point, so.
Do you, what about extending the hours from, say, four to seven, to give those families that do have church commitments a little bit more time? I mean, there's not gonna be very many people with the light on and out with their candy at four o'clock.
Well, I suppose, though, if they had the church commitments, those don't start till after six anyway, so if they wanna get out there at five by the way, they probably could, so it might be a moot point, I just wouldn't know, so.
Still not sure, I cannot remember if we motioned to set the.
I think we did.
I think we did.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to set trick or treating hours for October thirty-first, on Wednesday, from five to seven PM.
Motion by Hendrickson?
Second.
Second by Menzen, any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alright, on to old business, item number one is the culvert replacement on Roosevelt Street, and we have NSA representatives, so Guy, if you wanna get us kicked off.
Just a, uh, update is the fact with all the water we've seen, we obviously know the, the culvert under Roosevelt, uh, um, that is, um, uh, east of Longworth is not able to handle the water that comes down through our storm system, feel like we need to upsize it, so, um, let me see if I can get to the right slide, I opened that up, Joe, and then what did they do with it? Oh, that's about it. Oh, where? Oh, great, I'm gonna have to go to it from the inbox, but, oh, there it is, okay. So, this is basically, uh, one of the items that Joe sent us, uh, to give us an idea of what, uh, what we're after here. We feel like the, the culvert replacement is also gonna require drainage through the field, which means we're gonna have to work with the property owner, um, I feel like if we're gonna go do any drainage work in this field, we need to go a step further, even though we're not working on the culvert, to go over to the double culvert that is west of, of Longworth and work on the drainage as well, and I have spoken with John Arie, who farms it, obviously, and he's talking with Rex about, John is all in favor of this, he said that field needs a grass waterway going through it anyway to help his farming operation and help the water drain, so that's a point to be crossed, but, um, basically, Joe and Ryan have already worked through what's gonna, what it's gonna take, sort of getting the survey crew out there to actually do it, and sent us a proposal for their services, um, and it would be a competitive quote type of situation, it's not gonna get past the threshold where we need to bid, it's, uh, which is good news, it's not gonna be a terribly expensive project. The other discussion that we had was on road surface, um, that road is chip sealed. It probably needs replaced, can't help but think when we went and locked it, that's gonna be a fairly major project, then we will get into, into bid scenario if we wanted to redo road surface, so.
We can look to see where, how much you can do just to stay under that nine thousand.
My gut instinct is we're gonna put, put a culvert in and do an asphalt patch in that area where we cut it, and then put that chunk of road on the list to be handled at a later date. It's, it's not really gonna be a waste, in my opinion, we've got enough going on, we're pretty much committed to this fire station, we don't wanna disrupt that project by throwing a hundred thousand dollar project into the, into the mixer. I think we can solve our, some water issues to help protect the new fire station and keep the costs down where it should be fairly manageable, so from there, Joe, have you got any comments?
Yeah, I, I would stress the importance of any, every stormwater situation, you always have to look at what's happening downstream, you know, and in the world of civil engineering, I think there's probably more litigation involving stormwater than anything else, so, um, we're replacing a culvert, that will increase, uh, you know, the same, the water gets down to that field regardless, it's gonna speed it up getting there, so there'll be more erosion problems, more scouring in that field downstream of the larger culvert, um, they'll drain through there faster. And that's what we want, you wanna get away from house, but that means, as part of our service, I would provide, you know, um, an easement, uh, you know, proposed easement, I don't know if you can get it, but I would strongly recommend it for maintaining grassy soil through there.
So how far would you run that easement, all the way through that field if you could?
Yeah, that, so.
While you're talking to the guy about that, what about that other, would that be included also?
It can, I would get as much as you can, I guess.
While you're talking?
Yeah, um, it's easier to handle that in one conversation than go back and ask for more a few years later, um, at a minimum, this. So I'd remind, uh, we did, in two thousand fourteen, not everybody was here, I was familiar with the study, even though, you know, I wasn't in point of contact at that time, uh, we did a drainage study for this entire corridor, um, and so, I brought a copy of it, I can bring extra copies if, I don't know if, Guy, you probably have a copy of it.
Yeah, I have a copy of it.
So, the watershed draining to this culvert is probably a tenth the size of the watershed coming across here, like, we were recommending a four by eight box, twin, five by eight box, culvert over, um, in front of the fire station ultimately, uh, future fire station, and over here, it's, um, what do we have?
Three by forty, thirty-four inch.
Yeah, or forty-eight inch equivalent.
You have the three inch equivalent.
Yeah, so equivalent of four foot diameter, you have to squash a little bit to get it through the road, but they make those electrical pipes. Anyway, um, there's a lot more, so what I'm getting at is, uh, you know, we have one tenth of the water coming through this proposed culvert as the water's coming in from the west. So the impact it will have downstream of this Y will be very small, it's upstream of this Y, where proportionally, we're increasing it a lot, and then downstream here, we're just, you know, we're increasing it a small amount, because there already was a whole lot more water there, so.
The one thing that you may not.
That's why this is the critical section.
And the one thing you may not know, too, is there is no grass waterway at all there.
Yeah.
It's rolled right through it, and that makes the difference.
Yeah, that's my choice, so, you know, but.
If, if you get an easement, does that specify there will be some grass in there then?
Yes, I would specify a permanent drainage easement, um, and you can put language in there and these do, you know, stay vegetated. And it's ea, you know, it's easy to identify, you know, it's, you know, along the flow line, twenty feet on each side of the flow line down through there, or something like that.
We'll have to maintain that over the years and.
That's, you can specify that in the easement, and that might be, might need be negotiated, um, but, you know, we'd ask the property owner to ease and mose it, but, um, you know, so, potentially be a question.
Well, that's just that, in the current situation, until something changes, the guy that, that farms and also works for the city is gonna be moving, whether, no matter whose piece of equipment he's on, so, you know, but that, that eventually changes.
Yeah, and the issue is never the current property owner, it's the next one, you know, when something gets sold.
Now, one other question, now, when you talk about this culvert, are you gonna leave the existing culvert there? Or would you take that out?
Yeah, it'll be taken out and replaced in that location, so, yeah, it, it, uh, it won't, I mean, if we leave it, might reduce the size of the new culvert a little bit, but I don't know what condition that existing culvert is, if it's great, I mean, usually just put a brand new one in, they don't need to worry about it.
And you'd have to make that water take a cur, take a turn, too, to come out of that.
More grading, yeah, it's lined up where it needs to go right now.
I had to ask a question.
Yeah. I wondered, too, about taking out that ditch that we, that we cleaned up and, and make it flat, but, you know, you still could overwhelm this, I know you'd like to see it closed, and I would, too, but you tell me, I mean, it's still gotta take some surface water in that area, I mean, it has to, and it's still gotta be able to, we'd have to run a pipe from Longworth all the way to the new culvert to handle that water, and we would have to ingrate some kind of fairly sizable surface intake, and it's still possible if we had that thousand-year rain event, we could overwhelm that, and then you, that surface intake would then be a geyser.
Yeah.
You know, so I feel like having, leaving that ditch open is, even though it's not appealing in some ways, it's almost necessary in others, if you agree, right?
Oh yeah, and then if you start flooding the road, too, then it's bad. Yeah, and, I mean, we've had extremely wet weather, um, this culvert would be sized so that the road would not, there would be still backwater, so like, it's, it would be better than it is now, significantly better than it is now, but it's sized for a hundred-year rain event, it'd be one foot below the road, I think, so one foot below the road means there's still a pond there, um, but, you know, you can only size it for a certain event, a hundred-year rain event, for your reference, it's like seven and a half inches of rain in twenty-four hours, it's a lot of rain.
And there's, but, storms this year, that, three inches in two hours, so. Well, it's been one foot from the road this year.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's over the road this year, so.
So it, it's a significant improvement over existing.
Think about basically going from twenty-four inch tube to a four foot, you know, two foot to four foot a year.
And it's more than, it's more than double value, it's actually about triple.
And even with that ditch, we have a lot more improvement to do, the road, if there's future development, fire station, I think it can get addressed down the line.
Yep.
Without impacting what we're doing today.
But we can protect those property owners that are down there along Roosevelt with this, by putting this tube in and alleviate this situation immediately and not have it be any kind of waste of, of money, it'll get the job done.
I, I will say, upstream of this, Guy and I talked. I, I will say, upstream of this, Guy and I talked, it's critical as new developments are going in upstream of this, make sure adequate detention is maintained. I can assist in that. Make sure that happens.
I don't think we can allow another development to go in anywhere without some sort of detention, the way we're seeing the stormwater.
This is sized for, you know, current development and as that, you know, the water hitting this culvert will go up and...
Especially if we have by that time made some major road improvements, we've got to get that.
Yeah.
So, what it boils down to is the, I should've got you the, the sheet while I can get to the front part of it. Um, their quotas for their fees and taking care of basically everything that we need here.
So, is this for the two culverts or is this only addressing?
Just the culvert.
Just the east one?
Yeah, just the east one.
Just the east one?
You, you mentioned the other ones. I didn't know what were...
Yeah, the other one's a lot bigger. Um, yeah, in general, we need to do a top of survey vote for the benefit easement and we'll have a plan profile sheet showing the culvert, which is fairly simple. We'll have a quantity sheet so that Guy can get competitive quotes from local contractors and then get the work done. And it also have to obtain, uh, the county permit for working the right of way because the, the, the center line of the road is the culvert amendments. So, there, because it jogs sideways, so, um... And that, that's, can be obtained. I'm not worried about obtaining it. In the course of that, I want, Guy and I talked, you know, half that culvert will be the county's. It's their opportunity to cost share, so we will have that conversation, so...
And that's the east culvert?
Yeah. Now, you know, I know there's been back and forth, you know, the county did their own project. The city chose not to participate, so they stopped at a certain point, um, but I see that as separate, you know, what happened, um, previously. We'll see, um, I, I don't know. It will have to engage them, but I wanted to make sure. You want to proceed before I make that call.
So, basically, MSA's proposal is to, to, if we go ahead, is for them to collect the data, do the survey, put everything together, just like Joe told us, and get us to a point where we can go out for quotes. And I believe that number on your end was about eighty-five hundred dollars?
Eighty-five hundred dollars.
Okay. For engineering and, and all the prep. Now, if we add in doing some grade work from the double culvert west of Longworth, that would, and we had to ask them, it would be minimal, but we would have that.
But it would, yeah, it would increase it.
But we, and I think it is something that's proven we look at, but, um, the, the hard work, the, the stuff that's most, that we really need done would be covered by that, that bid. So, then, at that point, if we let them move ahead, that's when we start talking to the county, find out if we can get some funds from there, get to a point where we can get some quotes and, and know exactly where it will be. Didn't you have a number from a few years ago of like eighteen thousand that put a bigger culvert in there?
We had a number of eighteen thousand to construct a bigger culvert. I'm almost certain, well, that's twenty-fourteen numbers. And construction prices have come up a lot in the last four years, so my, I haven't done a revise. My gut says, um, we're gonna be around twenty-five now. And, uh, depending on roadway servicing and depending on how much grading we need to do downstream, that could add to that a little bit. So, twenty-five or thirty thousand probably on construction.
You talk about grading downstream?
Yeah.
Into, into his field then?
Yeah. It, it pretty much has to be graded and that's...
Sure.
Part of the easement, there'd be a temper, a portion of that would be a temporary easement to do that grading and then a permanent easement to keep up with.
We'd be basically building the water, you know, in, in exchange for the easement. And if he'd assume the responsibility of keeping it seated and moat.
Yeah. He'd get a, a maintain of the waterway for free, but, you know, he would need to provide that land, so...
Any other questions?
What happens if there's a difficulty getting an easement?
Um, I mean, I, yeah, no. We, I, yeah, I'm worried about, because, because I know, you know, if there's no easement, at least the city can, it needs to be presented and requested. If answer's no, then you can fall back on that, that, hey, we tried to get an easement and fix this. Because I think it will become a problem without an easement ultimately. There's more water going through there.
I'm responsible for farm, further south of that.
Yeah.
And there's a, a D-shaped ditch there that, oh, it confines the water great right now, so... And I can't believe that's gonna bother that any more.
No. This, yeah, this is just that, that sort of...
It is important though that you do have that, because if you didn't have that, that'd be when, the last couple of weeks, that'd have been a couple hundred feet wide downstream.
And you've been watching your farm disappear at the same time.
Is there legally something that, let's assume we can't get the easement, do we, we then have them sign off to say, we've refused this and therefore we assume the responsibility of this water coming into our field? Have you ever had to go to that extent?
It's hard to stop the water going down.
Yeah, that's, yeah, um, it's already...
At least get acknowledgement that we, we told you this is going to cause a problem, like, not Mike. It is going to, and you've, this was your decision, and just have an acknowledgement of that.
Yeah. Um, yeah.
I guess we can cross that bridge when we get there.
Yeah, yeah. I'll, I personally have not been at all in that situation, but I, I mean, I've got an extensive network or there's a lot of experience to do, so we can, uh, ask a few other people and see.
Well, let's cross that if we get there. Let's hope it doesn't come to that.
I can, all I can say is I think John feels fairly confident that it could happen because it's gonna boil down to, if Rex doesn't have to spend any money, he'll be okay with it. John's been trying to get a grass waterway through there, but asking Rex, hey, will you pay for my time to get this built? And the answer is no, because he would have to spend money. And that piece of land is difficult because it's got multiple landowners. He's got distant relatives that own that along with him and his brother. And so, but he has power of attorney, so, I mean, he can okay it and sign and say this is okay.
He can give us legal rights to it.
It's the whole factor writing a check, and that he doesn't want to do. And in this case, he wouldn't have to, you know, so...
Or one dollar, hopefully.
Yeah.
Usually that's what he's, yeah.
Yeah, right.
For one dollar and other good and ju, good and valuable considerations.
Yeah, exactly, for the easement, yes, yes.
Any questions on the project for MSA?
What we need to do?
If we need a motion for them to...
To proceed, they say.
A move, re-engage, uh, MSA to, uh, engage this project in beginning, uh, working the process.
Motion by Trump?
I'll second it.
Second by Schatz. Discussion? Good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Yeah, I just think the one top, one party didn't talk about his schedule, but, um, you know, it's probably, it's... Did you wanna try to squeeze it in before winter yet, or, I mean?
I mean, I can't imagine anybody that pushes dirt is gonna say, yeah, we're ready. My God, it's probably...
We could easily be ready prior to crops, yeah. You wanna do that through a grading before crops go in, so...
I think this spring would be the, I'd be a better time.
Give them this a little...
The crops and stuff are out out there for one thing.
Yeah.
And I wouldn't like specs early enough. We can get on somebody's front end list now.
Yeah, it won't take long. I'll hold off on the survey a little bit, just, um, it'll be cheapest for, if you wanted to do a little survey for that sewer extension, we can do it on the line, you know, so...
Yep.
But that, we can still get it done for, no flies.
It'd be nice to be able to flat that out for bits like in February or January.
Yeah, yeah. This is not a large effort. We can get it done. We can get it turned around, um, in short order, so, a couple of months.
I'll do it.
Perfect. Thanks.
Oh, yeah, Mothrak Street.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Um, uh, we just, we didn't have any news on Mothrak Street other than we, uh, have a, uh, MSA has a drone. I'm not the drone operator, but he's out of Ankeny and he was in the area. So, he flew Mothrak Street with a drone and he took a few photos. And I was thinking, someone turned out fairly well. We had decent weather. He said it was really windy, which you can kind of see in the trees. They're all leaning, um, so it's hard to take good photos.
It's a nice of a blurry.
Yeah, but, uh, if you liked the look of any of them, we'd be happy to bring them on, let you have it. I thought the white angle one, you can see quite a few things. It's a residential neighborhood, but that was just for your...
I can even forward this email to...
Yeah.
To all the councilmen and the town, take the P. tenant.
Yeah, that was it.
Okay.
All right, we're on item number two, resolution on city employee wages. What's the story on this one, Daniel? Um, job descriptions, it's only a table. And then, we did the resolution for the wages before, but with the part-time public works position, the job description, it put him on the paid chart, so he did approve that directly, the resolution. So, what did we, where did we approve him to be on the board? So, do you remember?
It was sixteen fifty.
Okay.
That'll be, but that wasn't on the chart, so...
Right, that was just a, we were...
Yeah.
So, we gotta, yeah, just move it up to get it on the chart, so...
All right, so we need to approve job descriptions. Um, the city clerk is the one that we used to hire Danielle, so that one, I believe, has already been approved and has not changed. But we did rewrite public works and then the part-time, which we are calling the public works service worker. Those are new descriptions.
I would like to recommend on the, the full-time guy's position. Says required special qualifications. I'd like to cut that for the goals for maintaining their certification back to a year instead of eighteen months. There's no reason to drag that out any two months.
Oh, gotcha.
Is that doable for all three of those? Do it those in twelve months?
Oh...
He did. He had him done in order.
Oh, I had him done in four months, yeah. I mean, only...
He had him done in order.
Yeah. Some of it was timing though. I mean, I went, took the Kirkwood classes. When you, when I decided to take the position full-time, those classes, I like worked one week and then class, one of the classes started at Kirkwood, so I, I suppose it could get, I would agree with you. Twelve, it's doable to get them done in a year. It is. All you gotta do is make a commitment to get the class and then get on, on, now I'm thinking that may be impossible, Chester, because you have to have a certain amount of experience first before the DNR will let you test. Yeah, so, in fact, that might even really maybe should be intended.
Yeah, I'm trying to think what it is, because I signed up for it.
I think you have to have two years of qual, two years of verifiable experience, which they allowed me to do it because I had been working part-time. And I, basically, the DNR did quiz me, well, what have you been doing? And I told them I, I had been running everything under Kevin's supervision, so they let me do it. But, um, that might actually have to extend out to three years, because if you have to have two years under your belt and then be able to get on the testing schedule...
And that would be consistent with what we have for the clerk certification. We have three years on that.
Yeah, and that, that is a protocol that is, is easily followable, you know? That, that, it just takes that long for the clerk certification, but, yeah, I, if you're starting from scratch, if you're hiring a new guy that has no, no previous experience, starting from scratch, it probably would have to be three, now that they...
That's a very good point.
Yes.
I forgot about that.
Yeah.
I'm glad I brought it up.
Yes, I am too.
The only thing I was thinking, I knew you did it in...
I did.
Less than six months, you had it.
Oh, yeah, it was definitely, it was probably four months I had it taken care of.
And that's the reason that I brought it up.
Yeah, yeah. But I had those two years of working part-time under my belt that the, the DNR deemed enough experience to, to do it, so... I'd have to stretch that to thirty-six months. So, that's not a deal breaker. You can still approve it, just for that change, right?
With modification, yeah.
Yeah.
Let's change that to thirty-six.
No, I'm confident.
I don't think so. I think this is administrative.
As far as just accepting the job description?
The description, yeah.
A motion to approve revised job descriptions with the public change in required special qualifications for public works director to thirty, within thirty-six months of hire for all of those certifications?
Yep.
Is that a question or a motion?
That was a motion. Well, it's kind of both.
If you have a question.
Sorry, I can do that again if you do that.
No, I got it. We caught it. There's a motion on the table to accept the job descriptions with the modifications stated.
I will second that motion.
Second by Menzen. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. And with that, as we said, so for the part-time worker before, we just had them on an hourly wage, just kind of how we set that, and it does move them to the pay grades so that change just slightly to the point where we need to redo the employee salary resolution. So, that will be part B. So, I would look for a motion on this resolution. And just for transparency's sake, that moves our maintenance worker. He was, we had approved sixteen fifty. To get him onto the pay grade, uh, the minimum, the bottom rung of that was sixteen seventy-seven, so slight bump there.
A move, re-adopt resolution ten, two thousand eighteen, oh, one.
Motion by Trump, second?
I'll second it.
Second by Schatz?
And then we need a roll call.
Okay. Any discussion on that? All right, roll call.
Aye.
Counselor Sean?
Aye.
Counselor Sarah?
Aye.
Counselor Trump?
Aye.
Counselor Henderson?
Aye.
Motion proof?
And do you want to make a motion to approve the job description for the...
It just did.
We did.
Well, you've got both of them.
Josh, we did all of them.
That was my question slash motion.
All right, item number three, update on the skid loader sale.
Well, we picked a very popular brand of skid loader. They moved us back again. It's gonna be in December before the new one shows. But, and they feel terrible about it. They have offered, uh, starting in the, in the next week or so to bring us a rental unit. It'll be a wheel loader, but, so we can go ahead and get ours sold and not putting more hours on it. So, I guess I'm looking for approval to go ahead and, and sell the, the old skid loader, get it cleaned up and, and get it advertised and get it out of here. And we look into sale of city assets and we really don't have to do anything as long as we feel like we've sold it for a reasonable price. We don't have to jump through any hoops or go to a certain spot, so, um, we've talked about putting it on Craigslist. There's been some talk of a Facebook page, and I know I prefer to look for, hunt for stuff on Facebook Marketplace. I don't know if maybe we wanna kind of hustle up and get a city Facebook page going, or if that's too quick of a rush. I don't think it's against any rule for me to, I could advertise it on my Facebook. Just make sure it's clearly marked as the city of Auburn has property. I don't, again, there was no regulations on how we advertised it and how we got it sold.
Does it have to be sold through any kind of government now?
They just said as long as you try to get pure market value.
Yeah.
Said somebody can walk in and offer cash for it if you feel like it's a good deal, city can take it.
Just another thought, because I heard the advertisement the other day, that Big Iron, that kind, you ever heard of that?
Yeah.
Is that a possible?
It's possible.
I don't, I don't know what their fees are.
Yeah.
That's the other problem. From Marketplace, it's free. Craigslist is free.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm guessing with that Big Iron, now that I think about it, there's probably a...
Oh, yeah, there will be, for sure. And, for example, John, um, also has in the past done some rep presenting for Dell Peterson and Associates. They do online auctions as well, and it, it, the fees will eat you up, but we can definitely hold it.
Pause our discussion. Deputy Tomlinson?
Two fans.
Starting to be in late. Apparently, people are wanting to have accidents.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Deputy Tendell, County Sheriff's Office, uh, for the month, required hours are forty-three, part-in were eighty point one with thirty-one calls for service.
Any questions, concerns?
No.
Oh, okay.
Perfect.
Thanks, sir.
Appreciate your service.
Yeah, I like what you've done with the place.
Good night.
Okay, so, back to the skid loader, and we wanted, the reason we're trying to sell this thing is to get as much out of it as we can, so I don't wanna miss any opportunity. Like, we're getting all that, it's, it's, needs cleaned up, good photos taken, which, you know, will get done, not a problem. And I'll check on the service, I don't think it's anywhere near due, you know, I'm not gonna try and sell it if it's like in need of, you know, it's two hours away from, from service. So I'll check up on that. But I guess, we need to talk about price and about where we advertise and how we go about it, if, how we're gonna come up with that. You know, if we get counter offers, et cetera, so.
Quick question before we go there, so on this rental, because they keep pushing us back, do all of our attachments fit? I assume they do, because they fit the new machine.
Yes, yes.
I mean, if we end up in February, it's still on them, but I wanna make sure we have full use of our equipment as well.
No, it, it'll attach everything we've got, and he made it perfectly clear, this is no cost to you, we'll, we'll get it out there. They've got two machines that they normally rent out, and it will be one of them, and he's got it lockout for us, and it's just hard to use until the new one arrives, so.
Okay, so, carry on.
Um, so, yeah, I think our thought process was reminding, remind me if you remember something different. Our best value trade-in was from Deere at twenty-four thousand dollars, we felt like we could even do better than that. I'm wondering if we wanna start at twenty-seven five, somewhere in that neighborhood for the machine.
Are you looking online and see what some of those are listing at, what are you seeing?
Yeah, the twenty, twenty-eight five probably is about the highest value I've seen out there. And it was for a machine with slightly less hours than ours, and I only searched our year and the year newer and the year older. And so, yeah, the, the highest priced one I saw, no, I take that back, I did see one for thirty thousand, but it was, um, one of those hundred hour, you know, hadn't hardly ever been out of the shed type of deals, it's unrealistic, throw the high out, throw the low out, you know? I don't feel like we should start too high, people get frustrated if, if it's too overvalued. Twenty-seven five or twenty-seven thousand to me is, is doable, I don't think we need to take less than twenty-five, personally, at least right now.
It's a high value machine, it doesn't have any emission stuff on it, low hours, clean.
Yeah, I agree.
I wouldn't start any less than twenty-eight.
That's what I was thinking.
It gives you a little, and I honestly wouldn't take much less than twenty-seven.
Yeah, okay, that's where you wanna be. It, it's not a problem, and the fact that it's gonna, i- if we make sure it's clear in our advertising, it's a municipal home, to a lot of people, that's gonna make a big deal.
Yes, Steve, did you have something?
There's a govdeals.com that you can put, like municipalities stuff, we sell a lot of stuff on there at work. It's just like an auction thing, and they just bid on it. You have to look into.
Yeah, and I've looked into that site, the commission, did you look into that?
Well, yeah, there's a certain percentage that they charge you.
Can't remember what it is. Three or five percent.
We, that's where we have to put all of our stuff.
Yeah, we do too.
So that's why I wondered, I couldn't believe that there wasn't a-
Yeah.
So I don't know, I can check into that very easily, so we have to put all of our stuff on govdeals.com first, so.
But what did you do before govdeals, govdeals is, you know, it's a fairly new website.
Uh, not sure, as long as I've been at Auburnette, that's what we've used, so probably, probably before that, you probably just threw it on Facebook or whatever, I don't know.
Was that a state requirement?
Uh, yeah, we have to, yeah, we have to put it out for a bit like that. I guess, I don't know if we have to use govdeals, I shouldn't say that, we have to put it out, and that has to be approved by our board and then put out, so. It is similar situation, sometimes this has to be approved, I just-
Well, and it depends on how you read it, I mean, if you put it out there on Craigslist, I mean, if, if I, if I go grab, you know, someone out of the community and say, "Hey, you want this skid loader for twenty-eight thousand"? And they say yes, that's not making it available to the public, are you sure it's not just making it available to the public?
They didn't, they just said, there's no restriction, I called the Iowa State, so I looked on their website, literally unless it's a property, the city owns.
It doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter.
I mean, well, and that should be a good resource to, to say, if you're gonna sell it, but we need the exposure, I mean, we, we want it out there, so we're gonna advertise anything. I can look into-
It's a high ticket, I mean, that's a high price tag, it's not just gonna be something somebody walks in looking for a desk chair, you know what I mean?
Right, right.
We're gonna have to advertise, um.
Okay.
I would definitely go the free route first, like, we're not in Hughery, we're not paying for a new one yet, so we've obviously got until at least December at this point.
Well, let's throw it in on Craigslist for a couple of weeks and see what happens, and then we can, we'll investigate the govdeals route, and we'll see what happens and find out what it is. Start at twenty-eight, take no less than twenty-seven, am I, can you, are you comfortable making a motion allowing me to accept any offer?
Well, that was just my opinion, I think-
No, I know, but we gotta get the number, but I'm, I'm saying, are you comfortable making a motion allowing me to make the deal with a bottom, you know, level? Is that how you wanna handle it?
Just because this is all in video, we're, we're losing the advantage here.
Yeah.
Oh.
We're throwing numbers out there.
Yeah, that's true. That's true.
So I don't know how to-
I don't know how you do that.
Yeah, we've already thrown that out there. Listed for twenty-eight and-
See what happens.
Okay.
Listed, can, can we word this, listed for twenty-eight thousand and at the end of one month, whoever offers the highest? Sort of like a bid process, but not?
Be careful about that.
Yeah, you have to put a reserve on that.
Sixteen thousand.
Yeah.
We need a reserve.
You're right.
We could do it with a reserve.
That's right, you're right.
Because I think if you said just the highest bidder and I come in, I mean, there's no stopping anybody from coming in and saying, sixteen grand, nobody buys it, I do it, and that's your round sell offer.
Yeah.
You know, so, you don't wanna be, I think you need a reserve price on there, and that's what I've done, we've done on govdeals, I think, and you probably can in Craigslist as well as, you know, like, auction.
Live auctions, they do, you know.
We don't remember, it's true, I don't know whether you wanna make that number, I don't, I don't have any frame of reference.
I don't wanna make that number public, can we do that?
Yeah.
I don't wanna make our bottom dollar number public. You're giving away your advantage.
Yeah, I don't know how much we have to be transparent on, I don't, I mean, if we're not required to even list it.
I would say put it out there for twenty-eight, you don't have to accept anything, if you don't feel it's a fair, like you said, a fair market value offer.
Yeah.
We don't have to accept it, and then, um, we can give Guy the, you know, the, um, approval to do that without the-
Can I make a suggestion? How about we just make a motion to approve advertising the skid loader for twenty-eight thousand dollars, and I will contact-
Individuals.
Individuals, uh, if I receive an offer less than that, how about, how about that? I will, I will contact the council if I receive an offer less than that. And see approval that way. Does that, that makes sense?
Good wording.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to, uh, have Guy start the process of the skid loader sale at twenty-eight thousand dollars on various free sites at this point for, for advertising with no knowledge that he will contact the council with any bids lost.
Motion's been made, or second?
I will second that.
Second by Mensen. Need further discussion? Good call on that, Brian. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. As far as Facebook Guy, if we did wanna go that direction, I'd prefer to have it on an official city account.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
And we probably, we could do that pretty quickly, I'd just like to have meat behind it, but that wouldn't be entirely necessary if we're not linking to the website yet, so.
Well, we got lots of options, I just was throwing it out there that it's been talked about, so maybe we should ramp it up, but-
If we wanna go that way, we can get one spun up.
Okay.
All right, um, item number four, update to street sign replacement.
There's a quote in there, the top page has a total of one thousand thirty-eight dollars and fifty cents, that was for all the signs that we come up with that are being replaced, as well as the, all the brackets that we would need to get those put up. And then there were decent pictures of the signs and list, there's a list. So I don't know if this is something that you wanna report it now.
What was the separate eight hundred total?
That was just the signs without brackets.
Okay. But we need the brackets, I assume.
Yeah, because they almost never, the screws almost never come out of the old ones.
Did you guys, did you find out about that grant for those signs?
That's just, I looked on the DOT website, it's just if you get, um, DOT signs, so stop signs, yield signs, it has nothing to do with-
Those trans-
Kevin was confused about what that grant would actually do, so. I think it replaced some of their traffic control signs, so it allowed them the, the money to replace their. I don't think he necessarily, that day, thought we were talking about street name signs, he thought we were talking about street signs, so. And we replaced-
All the stop signs.
All the stop signs, I help, I remember, that was right when I first started working, so.
Are you replacing any holes?
There'll be a couple, there's some damaged ones, and I've got holes, yeah.
Tell spurt holes?
What?
Tell spurt holes?
The ones with the holes in it? I can go any way, I've got, still got round ones that I kinda like to use up, but.
All right, so we have a quote of one thousand thirty-eight dollars and fifty cents for all the signs that have been deemed to be replaced.
How are those streets?
Streets?
Streets, first, first one.
Some of these signs are terrible, I'm moving, going ahead and buy these at this quota, one thousand thirty-eight fifty.
We can use our roll juice money for that.
Yeah. Motion by Trump, second?
Second.
Second by Henderson, discussions? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye. Motion carries.
And I, the lady that provided the quote, I asked her in time frame, she said three to four weeks, was where we could have been, so.
Okay, I'll give them.
Yeah.
Perfect. All right, I seek a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Mensen, second?
Second.
Second by Trump, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries, very adjourned.